The news was here.
It's just, uh.
That just, we don't have to.
Sutter's thing will all quit the stop. You're really, Sutter, hold on, sorry. It's not.
She's like.
I'm glad you're joining us.
I don't, they're trying to see her.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
I'm here.
Welcome to the conference.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
We did a little bit of work.
Now, when Mrs. Comber was our communication, we take.
Oh, James.
She's like, I see a lot of my stuff. I'm like, no, that's theirs. He's right from the test. What you're gonna do is you make money. You would know I said.
I want to check out.
Yeah.
Just make the Michael D.
Yeah. Good.
I don't know. I'll leave it. It's, it's zero when I.
What's up? Presentation.
All right, good evening, everybody. It is five thirty P M. On Monday, October ninth, and this is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District number one. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, W I B D, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer if this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please join me as we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We first recognize a quorum of our board with all seven members present tonight. Next on our agenda is the approval of this agenda, which was circulated in advance. I'd move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Kelly, thank you for the second. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, we move on to our student representative reports. And so we tonight are going to hear from, um, I'm gonna get this right, see, Amaya, Amaya Turner, and junior from East, as well as Noah Minty, a junior from West. And I believe, Amaya, you're gonna be starting tonight, correct? Why don't you come up to the podium? Welcome, and thank you for agreeing to be one of our student representatives. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Um, tonight, I'm just gonna be talking about our student life and academics, as well as our athletics. So, to start, last week was all about homecoming, so it was really just kinda, um, that was everything that everyone was involved in. Our East representatives for freshmen were Anita Sutton and Chase White, sophomores Tatiana Patrick and Frankel Kuhn-Frier, juniors Carson Steinhaus and Ree White, and seniors Elizabeth Ortiz, Nina Steinhaus, Cutler Schmidt, and Franklin Schatz. Our West representatives were freshmen were Jordan Peaky and Blake Herbert, sophomores were Amelia Bone and Michael Held, juniors were Amaya LaFonte and Noah Minty, seniors Alexandra Wagner, Clara Cobble, Beckham Heller, and Franklin Kuhn-Frier. Uh, East ended up winning the homecoming game, and we had, uh, our East, um, teams won our Powderpuff, and West took Powderbuff, so that was kinda split. Um, we also had two national merits semi-finalists. Um, two seniors, uh, were Chloe Marsh and Owen Damcott, who now have the opportunity to continue the competition to earn one of seven thousand one hundred forty different national scholarships, uh, worth nearly twenty-eight million. And the semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalists around the level of competition, and the scholar, um, these needs are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in college. We also had in comic book, uh, like, competition, so Ara Marcon, a junior from West, took first place in the fourteen to seventeen-year-old category, and Mark Gunwald, um, for the challenge, uh, took, I'm sorry, um, was, he wrote an original twenty-three-page comic, The Chronicles of Bark, and won for creative writing and her artisticship in it. It was inspired by a comic book legend, Mark Gunwald, who was a native of Oshkosh and creator of Captain America. We also had our musician earns honor. Our West sophomore French hornist Grace Lass has earned a chair with the Elite World Strides Honors Performance Series. The honors performance series was established with the goal of distinguishing talented student musicians in a once-in-a-lifetime performance. Grace will travel to New York for several days and rehearse for prestigious conductors and lead up to the performance at Carden E. Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Let me invite forward Noah Minty.
Perfect. Here to talk to you guys about the clubs and co-curriculars. Never has there been a better time for students to get involved in things, as several clubs are starting to kick off, so that's really the bulk of what I have for you here today. New this year, the Wisconsin Civics Games have just officially been recognized as a team. Uh, our debate team has started up, attended several tournaments. The Black Student Union is now being managed by Mr. Wallace. Um, oh yes, here we go. So, on November fifth and sixth, our Skills USA leadership is planning to visit the Fall Leadership Conference up in the Dells. Um, the chess club has skyrocketed membership yet again. Uh, they meet every Wednesday in the West cafeteria during flexi. Uh, East and West National Honor Society have started, and both have new advisors. We have Mr. Arns for West, and Mr. Hartman, and Ms. Farshone for East. There's a new co-curricular in West Bend High School this year. It's the Latino Student Union. Uh, they hope to inspire connections between Latino culture and the school's community. And that's really all I have for you right now, so thank you so much for listening to all the great things that happen on our school.
Well, thank you, Noah, and thank you, Amaya. Appreciate you, um, appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to keep us informed as to what's going on. Appreciate, homecoming, I would imagine, was kind of all-consuming, in a good way, so.
I do have one question. Who, who won the spirit stick?
West? Was it West?
Was it, was it West again? Okay. Just confirming.
Eight years in a row? Okay. Thank you, appreciate you coming. All right, um, next, uh, on our agenda is public participation. I do not have any comment cards, I'll just double-check to make sure I don't see any in the audience, so we will move forward then with, next is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three Regular Board Meeting and Executive Session. We also included minutes of the budget hearing for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and minutes of the one-hundred-fourth Annual Meeting of Electors, uh, as well as six contracts, one resignation, no retirements, and disbursements posted to October sixth, twenty-twenty-three. And also Superintendent Wimmer, just to confirm, we included those minutes from the budget hearing and the annual meeting of the elector, electors, more for informational purposes only, because we're not the body who approves those, but for record-keeping purposes, it's now a part of our official record this way, is that correct?
Correct. We're not required, because the meeting or the electorate is that one time. Next year, they wouldn't even approve minutes, um, because it would be a different group of people, but this moves that into our board docs archive and gets that all in one spot. So, again, not a requirement, just a, a spot for us to make sure that we, we've got an accounting of that meeting, and it gets archived.
Sure, and it's publicly available. No, I think that's a good practice. Any questions, anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Now we move to reports, and we start with our Curriculum Committee Report, and our Curriculum Committee Chair, Melanie Ergot. Melanie?
All right, so the Curriculum Committee has been busy since our last meeting. Um, we met on September nineteenth, and, uh, the Curriculum Committee, Tim Harder, Director of Facilities and Technology, presented an update on youth apprenticeship courses and the pathways of the career and technical education work-based learning. Um, the committee recommended the addition of two youth apprenticeship courses to move forward for the full board's consideration and approval. These courses are education, youth apprenticeship, and business administration to begin immediately upon approval. And the committee also recommended the removal of three pathways to move forward for the full board's consideration and approval. These pathways are youth apprenticeship culinary, youth apprenticeship welding, and independent study and career exploration to be sunset in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Um, those, I believe, Tim will be speaking about tonight in the discussion. Um, Tina Van Rue, the data coordinator, presented an overview of fall assessments administered for grades K through ten. It was also shared how families can access student assessment results in Skyward, and how the scores are used to support instruction. A timeline for when results are available, and when the next screening will take place was reviewed. In a follow-up to the boardwork session on instructional materials conducted on September seventh, Dr. Trueblood, the Director of Curriculum Instruction, reviewed the curriculum development and improvement process, the primary resource adoption process, and the book club adoption process. Members of the committee reviewed the flow-through of the processes and the stakeholders participating in each process, along with the committee's roles and responsibilities. No changes were recommended. Um, myself and Dr. Trueblood, um, both extended appreciation to all the E L A teachers and the C and I team for their timely efforts in vetting of the books for the first-quarter book clubs. Um, and then we also had two special meetings to go over some book club lists. Um, so we reviewed book club lists for seventh and eighth grade, and the high school honors one and honors two English courses. Um, some comments included offering selections that were more lighthearted in content from a variety of genres, um, like non-applicable in the different columns on the parent permission slip, um, where we had the three categories that we wanted to be highlighted, it was the vulgar language, um, sexual content, and the graphic violence. We wanted to see some more, um, books that maybe didn't have anything in any of those categories, so there would be more student choice if permission slips weren't returned, or if people just preferred that type of material. Um, and to continue to include some selections representing different ethnic cultures, and that we will be getting feedback from students and staff to be collected in the near future, and from families by the end of this semester on the new process involved here. And, um, like I said, we just, all, the whole committee wanted to just express our, um, appreciation to all the teachers and principals, and the librarian, and the whole curriculum and instruction team for their efforts in vetting all these books in a timely fashion, so they can get, get to learning, so, thank you.
Great, any questions for Melanie? I'll echo my personal thanks, too. I mean, anytime we have changes like that, they have side effects, as in work, and, um, I really appreciate seeing everyone pitching in and realize that it's, uh, time away from other activities, but it's important work, so thank you for your leadership on that. Any final items on Curriculum Committee? Let's move then to the Superintendent's Report, and Superintendent Wimmer.
Well, as our student rep said, last week was pretty exciting with homecoming going on. We had some amazing events, lots of spirit going on in all of our schools, so whether you're at the elementary or the high school, they've got different dress-up days, you know, they culminate with the choosing of the sides for East-West, as, you know, Ms. Felber shouted out from the crowd. Uh, you know, while one was victorious at the football game, there was lots of opportunities for both East and West to, to be victors, uh, this past week. But, uh, just a thank you to the many students, the groups, our staff members, and community members who make, um, homecoming the, the community parade, the event itself, and all of that, the amazing event that it is, so it's enjoyed by all. We were able to, uh, enjoy lots of the parade and a good amount of the Athletic Hall of Fame before the rain set in. Um, and again, the, the kids, uh, do floats and all different clubs. The West girls volleyball team kept up their multi-year streak by winning the float contest, uh, with their float. Um, and again, everyone gets in on the fun, the younger students with, you know, different dress-up days, and, and then kind of choosing a side for that, that Friday night. Uh, part of that, uh, we precede the game with the Athletic Hall of Fame, that's open every year, so I just wanted to highlight, um, eleven, uh, entries, very deserving individuals. Uh, you can go to our district website, there is a tab specifically for the Athletic Hall of Fame, this year's inductees, as well as years past, but I'll just, uh, give you a shout-out to, uh, those who were selected, and a little brief, uh, intro why. Alan Pick, uh, class of nineteen thirty-eight. While Alan wasn't with us, his daughter, um, you might recognize the name, Pretty Pick Way, uh, also previously inducted for distinguished contributions, was there to accept on his behalf. He was, again, class of nineteen thirty-eight, a distinguished football player and a distinguished contributor. Uh, he and his wife generously donated the lights that we stood under on the football field that evening. B J Royce, you probably know his voice more than him, he is the consistent announcer at athletic events, um, but he himself was also a longtime volleyball coach in both our schools and community. Uh, Dave Alman, uh, East class of nineteen ninety, uh, football player, wrestler, and coach, and also an administrator in the district. Steve Tennants, uh, West class of two thousand and one, football player, basketball, and baseball player. Paul Henneke, West class of two thousand and eight, baseball player, basketball, and golf, um, was also drafted by major leagues, played for both the Tigers and the Dodgers. Uh, Jackie Vorpal, West coach, track and field, as well as longtime gymnastics and diving coach for more than thirty years. Uh, her team still hold multiple unbroken records in our schools. Mike Vorpal, uh, also known for coaching wrestling, football, track, uh, and field and gymnastics, he was a coach for thirty-six years, uh, with his athletes still holding eighty-five individual conference championships, ninety-eight individual state qualifiers, and numerous records, um, also throughout his tenure that are still unbroken today. Jamie Gardner Cohen, so the next set is the Gardner sisters. Um, so, so the eldest, Jamie Gardner Cohen, uh, East class of nineteen ninety-seven, all elite volleyball players, uh, she was also a soccer player. Uh, Lori Gardner Gabler, East class of nineteen ninety-eight, volleyball, basketball, soccer, played for Indiana and Arizona. Cory Gardner Showfield, East class of two thousand, volleyball, basketball, soccer player, also played at Madison, and Chrissy Gardner-Rollinger, the East class of two thousand and two, uh, volleyball, soccer player, and she went on to play for Northwestern. Mom and I joked on the sidelines, as the mom and oftentimes coach of the girls, perhaps she should just be crowned on field for, for her contributions to sports, so it was nice to see all, all of the sisters and their families come together for that recognition, uh, despite the rain. Uh, in the next couple weeks, our schools are hosting parent-teacher conferences, so take a look at the opportunities to check in with teachers and staff to discuss your children's learning and their progress. Uh, staff appreciation, uh, we just wanted to give a shout-out to our staff. We are a United Way pace-setter, um, contributor, meaning that we kind of lead United Way, we do an early campaign, and all of our schools and staff, uh, support that. We had a large group of volunteers at the United Way of Washington County's United Against Hunger Event last month. Uh, they helped assemble snack packs for distribution locally, and we wanted to also thank the United Way for then in turn contributing forty boxes of snacks for all of our schools and students. So just thank you to the staff who take advantage of those opportunities to, uh, give back to the community they too serve. And a reminder that this week is National School Lunch Week, so thank you to our very dedicated nutrition staff who serve more than two thousand five hundred meals every day in our schools, uh, and they're always hiring, so be part of an amazing team, uh, check out our website, so a thank you to them as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right, hearing none, we will then move to discussion items. We have three discussion items planned on our agenda tonight, and the first is out-of-state travel for West Wrestling. And Erin Felber, our West Athletic Director, is going to walk us through this. If I, my, do I have that right? Yes, I do. Good evening.
Hi, I'm actually just here to show support for the West Wrestling program, but I'm gonna have Coach Erin Spath do all the hard work, so I'll have him explain it to you.
Welcome, Coach Spath.
Thank you. All right, so we have two separate out-of-state, uh, requests. Um, the very first is to have the twenty-twenty-three Dan Gable Donnybrook Tournament. That takes place in Correville, Iowa. Correville is literally just outside of Iowa City. Um, this is a tournament that we requested to go to last year, went to it, very well-run, um, it was an awesome experience. Um, so that, the dates for that are December first and second, that's a Friday and Saturday. Um, there are teams from Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, there's three teams from Wisconsin, um, Missouri, so it's a, a, a national-level tournament for the high school. Um, we were invited last year, we really are hoping to go back this year. Um, couple of key things, it's self-funded, so all of the hotels are paid for through our fundraising activities throughout the, the year. Um, so the, the cost per participant is completely covered by the, the team outside of food. Um, in the sport of wrestling, wrestlers are pretty particular about what they're eating anyway, so typically, they're bringing their own food. Um, we usually stop for dinner on the way home, but, um, in, in every year past, um, we, we just notify parents, and if there's someone that doesn't have money for the food, we, we purchase it as the coaching staff. Um, the list of chaperones, it'd be myself and my assistant coach, Justin Lor. Uh, we take two school vans, driven by Justin Lor and myself. We have a parent communication that we send out if approved. That is the first out-of-state request. Um, the second one is to have the twenty-twenty-three Minnesota Holiday Tournament. This is another tournament that we've attended in the past, this would be our third year traveling. This takes place at the Mayo Civic Center in Rochester, Minnesota. Um, very similar, it's self-funded by the team, um, we do fundraising, we, we purchase all the hotels for the athletes, um, transportation is the same, it's the school vans. The, the chaperones are myself and my assistants, Justin Lor and Justin Wagner. Um, for this one, you might notice there are two options for, um, leaving West Bend, and this is only because we wear winter sports, so we just wanna be very aware of the weather. Um, we have two different, um, departure times, one would be the morning of February, or I'm sorry, um, December fifteenth, so we would just leave from school. Um, that's if the weather's good, if not, we have to always just have a, a backup plan, so option two would be that we leave Thursday night. The nice thing about weather, we typically can plan for that and communicate that well in advance, but we wanted to put that on there just in the event, um, that Friday morning, there is a snow shower, and we could have left Thursday night and avoided it all.
Very good, so this is a discussion items, we'll take action at the next meeting, but before we leave this topic, board members, any questions for Coach Spath?
Do you have a preference for which option you would exercise for when to leave?
Yeah, um, in the past, we've done the Friday morning, and that's worked out well when the weather's nice. Um, we leave, I think, right at like five forty-five, which it seems early, but that's not actually all that different from our Saturday tournaments. If we were going to Shawna, Wisconsin for a tournament, that's pretty typical. That would be the preference, and it's actually the preference of the wrestlers, it's just one more night in their own beds. Um, I'll be truthful, we start driving, and most of them put their headphones in and take a little nap, so that would be the preference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right, appreciate the information, and we'll take this up as an action item next board meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next discussion item is career and technical education work-based learning course changes, and Tim Harder, our Director of Facilities and Technology, will lead us through this presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. So I had an opportunity to share this at our last, um, Curriculum Committee meeting, and those of you who have been on the board long enough know that sometimes in the world of career and technical education, um, our normal cycle of changes to courses is a little different, because we are driven both by our articulation agreements with Moraine Park, but also with the state of Wisconsin and Wisconsin D P I changes, and in this case, the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development. So, as part of our school district here, we are part of a program called Youth Apprenticeship, which is a work-based learning experience for our students in the district. Um, our students take a course in-house that is related to a content area, and at the same time, they can apply with a local company to work and receive credit while hitting a criteria of items that they have to learn. So, for example, every year, we hire a I T youth apprenticeship student here in my department. That student has taken or is currently taking an I T class at our high school. When they come in here, they are employed, just like every single one of our computer technicians are here, they go through the same training pieces, and they hit some articulated, um, curriculum pieces or learning and skills pieces that I have to sign off on by the time they leave at the end of their work, uh, work experience. So because this isn't all overseen by Wisconsin D P I, the timing does get thrown off every once in a while, and in this case, um, Wisconsin of Workforce Development changed some things in late August fourth. And so, uh, the first being that they have added two new pathways to our students', um, experiences in the youth apprenticeship program. The first one is a education, youth apprenticeship, um, pathway, and so part of this pathway existed before under a co-op, which was related to what they call early childhood education, so that is birth through four K. So, uh, more childcare, four K environment, three K environment, and so forth for our students, and we have some students who have participated in what they call the co-op experience of that. But based upon some feedback from K twelve schools, um, and universities, they have added a K twelve work-based learning experience pathway here, which mirrors well with the new education pathway that we just brought forth with approval, and we are offering our first K twelve classes this year in conjunction with U W Whitewater and U W Oshkosh. So students who would take this youth apprenticeship would have the opportunity, um, to be able to either work in a, um, a daycare environment, a early learning environment, or now with the new K twelve education pathway within our classrooms here in the school district. The second pathway that they have added, um, is an expansion in the business world, business administration. Um, so they have offered two different things, one is an administrative professionals pathway around information processing and office technologies, and the second is focusing on the human resources professionals piece. And particularly here in West Bend, we've had a lot of ask for that human resource, um, piece over the last few years, related to our business and marketing classes at the high school, we're very excited, um, for that as we go forward. When this comes back for your, um, you know, consideration and approval at the next boarding, we are gonna ask for immediate approval of these new courses to be added to our course catalog this year. We will have students who will be able to take advantage of these second semester, um, and so being new, and that we weren't notified till the end of August, obviously, that didn't make last year's cycle, so that will be an ask that we will ask the board to consider, um, and then we would communicate that out to all of our students, um, and our guidance counseling staff, and so forth. Along with these additions, we would look for removal of courses for next school year. So the state no longer is going to offer a specific pathway in youth apprenticeship culinary, um, which has been incorporated into a larger pathway under hospitality, tourism, um, and logic, um, so that matches some of the collegiate-level terms that you see, so I'm familiar with U W Steltz program, I went there to college, they have an entire hospitality and tourism program. You can focus on a culinary piece, you can focus on tourism, you can focus on golf management, this would broaden our students' opportunities, not just having to go work in the world of culinary, they could go out in any of those areas as they go forward. Um, so we would sunset that and rename that course for next year. Um, we would also remove youth apprenticeship welding, um, which is being encompassed into just the manufacturing, um, youth apprenticeship. So we already have that, um, on the course guidebook, just that they will no longer after this year offer that use of youth apprenticeship welding piece. The other thing that we will ask for removal of is, is a course called Independent Study and Career Exploration. This was a course that was built specifically for our kids who wanted to go into K twelve education. And so now that we have a program at the state level, um, with a certification piece, it is actually a redundancy between the co-op and the youth apprenticeship program, and so we want our kids to leave with a certificate that's not just credit from us, but also some outside credentialing with that. some outside credentialing with that. So we would recommend the removal of that course, and then we would have our students take both, or excuse me, either/or the co-op piece or the youth apprenticeship program in the future. Any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions? So it sounds like this went to the curriculum committee for kind of initial reactions, and I believe you talked about it in your report, but I didn't hear any concerns or objections, anything of that sort? Okay.
No, I think we all recommended moving forward with it.
And on the second page, I don't mean to be redundant, but if there's, so if there's an individual who's interested in culinary or in welding, there is a path for them.
Yep. So yeah, it's just a different name basically at that point in time. It's encompassing into a larger focus to give our kids more options. Currently, if I wanted to place a child purely in a tourism pathway or just lodging, it's a little bit tougher to do at that point in time, so it's giving our kids a larger scope of options than what we currently offer today.
Great. Other questions? All right, so again, this is a discussion item, so we'll see this back as an action item on the next agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your presentation. And then our third discussion topic is district funding review, and Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, is coming to the podium and will guide us through this discussion item. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. We're getting into some crunch time. We appreciated the opportunity to present information to the community and the stakeholders. But two weeks from now, I'll be standing at the podium, we'll be setting the final levy, final mill rate, and a final budget to work with for the year. So just a couple of things leading into that, because some of the stuff that we only do one time per year, it's nice to have the refresher, and even if all seven of you have it down, eight of you, excuse me, all eight of you have it down, maybe some other members of the community might appreciate just possibly three minutes of your time to share just a little bit of an update. So we started this budget really in November, December of last year. We started looking at what it might look like. It was a part of the state biennial budget. We've worked through that. March, we started looking at the revenue and expenditure estimates. We brought that forward. We've been engaging various stakeholders on that duration, brought a preliminary budget forward for discussion and approval, had our annual meeting two weeks ago. So I'm stealing just a little bit of time here. This maybe, just something that we haven't necessarily done, but it's a little bit different this year because everything is about one week before. We've typically had the meeting in October, the second board meeting, right at the end of October. So we still don't have a fair amount of information that I'll be sharing, just as a reminder of what that information is that we're waiting for. But again, October 13th, 23rd, we'll be setting the final budget levy mill rate. Keep in mind, a budget's a living document. In May, June, maybe even as early as April, we may be looking at an amended budget because the spending plan sometimes changes. And then next August is when the auditors show up, which they're doing, and they've made really good progress on the 22-23 audit. They'll be starting that next August. So it's really a rolling timeline that we have that almost spans about 18 months. So just a little reminder, and these are two links that I have, two live links. The top one here, Budget and Finance webpage, that's where we've accumulated a fair amount of information. We have some graphs, prior year financial audit statements, our standard emporers, our Moody's ratings, and any of that financial information is really organized. The second link that I have, and you'll note, it says 22-23 Public School Funding, and that's this document that I've shared in the past, and I kind of call it that black document with the blue graphs on it. And that's just a little bit of what I want to share this evening as a reminder, because much of this is what we're going to be going into two weeks from now. So revenue limits, total revenue limit authority, we talk about that, it started back in 1993. It's our resident membership, so those students that we get to count that live within our boundaries, we multiply that by a pupil dollar amount. So that's what's determined by the state in that biennial budget that every two years. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it's been held flat, a couple of times it's gone down. So we just need to be mindful of that. We were the recipient, since we're considered a low-spending district, that we got to pick, the floor got lifted by almost $1,000 this year. But so that's that per pupil amount. There are some one-time exemptions that we are usually pluses, they can be a negative as well, but an example of that, since we have declining enrollment, we get to maintain our enrollment for one extra year, a few dollars for an extra year. That's an example of a one-time exemption, and then it goes away. And if you continue to have declining enrollment, you continue to have one-time exemptions. There are some ongoing exemptions that recur. An example is if a district were to pass a recurring exemption, a referendum, recurring referendum forever, that would be listed as that. So it would be in there the first year and then be built in forever. So there are some special ed allowances where we receive new students, some things like that, that get built in as a recurring expense. But when you take the residents, multiply it by the per pupil, add the non-recurring, add the recurring, that gives us the total pot that we get to work with. It's a revenue limit. Tech colleges have them, and that's about it as far as I'm aware. When we take that total revenue limit, the two funding sources are state equalization aid, that's the money that we get from the state, and as well, our property tax levy. I don't like to say that revenue limit equals those two because we receive a calculation of that revenue limit. We also receive that state aid, so it's really what's left. So it's really the revenue limit minus the state aid equals the levy that the board has authorization to go up to the maximum allowable authority. So I like to rephrase that equation just a little bit. When we take that levy, that dollar amount, and we divide that by our total property values, and again, that's been growing, and again, just simple division, multiply it by 1,000, and that's what determines our mill rates. We're at 797, then 638 proposing right now, and this is preliminary, and I'll go over where this can be adjusted or tweaked based on some information that we're waiting for. But the mill rate, again, we have an estimate that was shared at the annual meeting, but again, that's that mill rate calculation. So again, a lot of variables that based on that levy that we finalize, we're given a property value, and it calculates the mill rate or the taxation rate on average across all parcels in the district. We're waiting, and I shared this at the annual meeting, but we're still waiting for some pieces of information. We do have a new one, the third Friday in September, the membership count, and we both look at enrollment as well as membership. Subtle difference between those, enrollment are those students that are in our halls, in our schools, being educated. It may be an open enrollment in student, but that's who's enrolled in the district actually being educated versus that membership who we get to count, and it may be a student that's open enrolling out to a district, but that's who we get to count because we receive funding for those students, and then we pay for anything that is required. But that's complete. It was a little bit higher, but because we have declining enrollment, it had a $1,680 impact, even though it was more students, and it impacted our three-year average, it only gave us an additional $1,600. It does, that is one of those exemptions that I mentioned, it actually makes the following year look a little bit financially better. It improves that situation. It just doesn't give us any, very little additional money in the current year. But that's done. We do need to factor in some other exemptions. Those are being finalized in the next two weeks. As well, the state aid that I referenced from the Department of Public Instruction, we're using the July 1 estimate. I did, I continue to look at that and make sure that that's in alignment, but we don't receive the final one until Friday, the 13th, as well as the final property valuation from the Department of Revenue on that same day. Those are both statutory-driven. It's the 15th or the Friday before, if it's a weekend. So we're waiting for that information, we'll finalize that. So I don't have anything to share and say the property values are higher, the mill rate will be a little bit lower, there's a new state aid estimate that we have. I just wanted to go over a couple of formulas today and remind us for two weeks from now when we are making that decision to set the final information. Do you have any questions or comments?
Questions for Mr. Sarno. So this really was a refresher, as you get more of those data elements, that's when this board will see it, and that'll be an action item at that time, correct?
Exactly, two weeks from tonight. Yeah.
All right. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes. So that concludes our discussion items. We have no action items on our agenda, so we turn to the future, our future agenda items. We start with our board meeting calendar, and so we have two curriculum committee meetings scheduled on October 17th and November 21st, both at 4:30 PM at the Education Service Center. And our next two regular board meetings are October 23 and then November 13, both at 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center. Superintendent Wimmer, I recall that I think we've landed on some dates for Policy Committee.
We've circulated to those Policy Committee members, just waiting for that final check-back. So anticipate a meeting per month, just waiting for that verification. Watch for board docs, every other avenue to see when those are.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the board meeting calendar? All right, any other items for follow-up and communication? All right, well, hearing none, we've reached the end of our planned agenda, but there is an item that's appropriate to discuss in executive session. So I would make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely compensation. There be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. This requires a roll-call vote, so I'll turn to my roll-call page. All right, Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gruger?
Yes.
And Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous, so we are officially adjourned into executive session. Thank you to everyone for attending.